Okay, anyway, thanks for being here again. I was glad to hear Mr. Kirby talking to the teachers about the need for us to focus on academics this year. I'm excited to have more reports and really focus, get, dig deeper into academic achievement. I think it is what our school district needs and excited for that. Having said that, thank you, Kyla and Riley. And I mean, there's a lot of people that probably helped kick that off and get a good job.
A lot of work.
Let us jump right into our reports. We're gonna have Mr. Coleman take up a little bit of time with our audit today. So we'll hurry down through and try to get to that audit as quick as we can. Do you have somewhere you need to be tonight?
I don't.
Okay, alright, maybe we'll take our time then.
Yeah. I thought about it, but that was the truth, so whatever you guys need.
Okay, no, we'll get there as quick as we can. I just need to take care of her policy, some of these other items first, so. Mr. Kirby.
Alright, so I will just let you know that the admins, they just started back yesterday. They're script. I think excuse them probably without, for sure getting permission from the board. Just say, you know, take tonight off, we're trying to get things over to school. We'll get by this week. They'll be coming back here in the morning. But again, and thank you Jim for that because I've talked to the admins as well. Clearly want to make sure that can focus first on our admin administrative agendas as we talk weekly. And then tell me the first thing on their board reports that they give you each month. It just needs to be a focus. These are, has history of really strong academic performance. A little bit lower this year in some ways after having some of that data, higher R data. Just, I think I'm maybe, I'll be the sort of parent that I want to get us kind of on track and in the direction. So I'm happy to show you plenty of reports from the three staffs and where we're at. Not to belabor, but just we just need to look at where we are and move forward. Think the admins, wants everybody to understand score rate and that's significant with the board base of things. The admins do, it's gonna, it's gonna help trickle all, you know, all the way down to where everybody's. It's really focused because they know that it matters how we do on ISAT scores, like us. How we get along with kids, all these factors, but that's a big part of what we do. So we had, we've had a number of meetings on things coming up. It's proved that 80 foot by 140 foot steel building is gonna be coming into place. We have a schedule on that, they think they could probably, we have to get a contractor in place. But the architects feel that we could be going by Anderson too. They're gonna come out, I think this needs to meet and survey Thursday.
Thursday is the middle.
Okay, yeah, there's several things in process or my idea is that we can take it and private.
Did I understand, sorry, did I understand that there was a couple of different options to put in?
They're doing, they, the size is staying the same. It's the building height, they were gonna give us two, to what the bid would be. At this building height and then to add to, I think there was, was it 25 feet, was that the other one? Was there 21 and 25? So they were gonna do, they were gonna, that's what, that's what EB Studios went out for. Is, is, and if they, if they, the basic would be the 21, but if they, if they had to, if they were at over 25. The reason I, I won't tell Mr. Kirby, I'm sorry, but the, having that 25 foot, I know we all were discussing the cheerleader. But having that room above the concession and the bathrooms, having 25 feet, what's that do? Gives us a little bit more storage space room. So that was why we asked to have that evaluated so that we could see whether or not we. Because storage space, as you know, you could always, if you've all built a house, you know that you never have enough closets. So that was why we did that.
Well, the other thing was if 25 feet is the standard gym height, so if you have that, so. You could have one, that's a part of the middle, and 25 feet would be the bottom height, so. That would be a consideration.
And it's something you guys, yeah, it's just an option.
We'll have two bids, it's a good option. So last board meeting on the 14th. I went down to the city afterwards to talk about temporary storage, storage containers. And I just presented the fact that we do in fact have four of them and they work really well. And explaining what we do and where they are, how we utilize them, just requesting permission to keep them where they're proper. We can move them if we want, we can get them out of sight, out of mind. There's probably two of them you could move kind of to the back, outside of the building, offered to do that. I don't know how that's gonna come out after anything that they said, we'll get back to you. So they're aware, they're listening, intently asking the questions, and so we'll see how that shakes out. We did have Fred Reeves come up and do some striping up on the parking lot. And he did some seal coating as well, so it's a nice hole, just looks like it better. He also fixes potholes, you know, at some point we could try $10, $2 million on a whole new, a whole new apartment. Kid, I don't know, that's where you are with money. If we can kind of keep it going and keep it looking not too bad, you know, for $60,000. It's a two way, I guess, I love that idea, so. Anyway, I think he's got it looking pretty nice and striped all, all the other schools. He's put in some pop scotch, art store, basketball, lions, and parking lot, so. He does a real good job, he's, he's gonna work through it, they get to work. Barb Smith, your audit, and I think she's the first one to state, I've recorded her. She is, she is, gets it done, she does a fine job, she's excellent, yeah. So appreciate you kind of following up on that tonight, this year. The, mention to you that our field house is gonna, I guess, for lack of another name, it's in the public student center for now. It is gonna have to have students in it, it's part, part of the requirement to have that building. And to use for some of the funding, some of which levy supported, some of it is from other sources. And we do know that cheerleaders in there probably is one of the primary uses. And we do know they can get credit for their, for doing that, so the mega class. Potentially there could be banned in there, some other, some other classes, PE as well, very likely. But as you look at that, it's called the student center on the fadeboard, I guess, down the road. Or the name of it, whatever they like.
The name Kirby?
Yeah, yeah.
Kirby, Kirby's a.
No, you can name the landscaping, you have to be able to name the landscaping on the track.
I'm sure, you deserve it.
I, I, okay.
Yeah, you do, yeah, I agree.
It's not that much fun, and I, I don't know, we're, we're clearly at a dispute resolution. Because in my mind, I just can't, I can't in good faith sign off for the district when it's been done. They say it's enough, and I just don't think it is. I told them in my letter, I honestly believe it goes to litigation, mediation or litigation. We could irrigate, heck, out of that field, I think we would have puddles three inches high before it drains into the grates. And you can't have that, it's mud holes, it's ice, for kids who don't play football, potentially have their practicing. That's not how it should be designed, we shouldn't have a brand new field with that kind of landscape. And I don't, I'm not crazy about the design, most tracks I've ever experienced, I've experienced by field. Have just a very inside, you know, you kind of slow it, slide it down inside. And there's a little grate all the way around the front as it goes down into, you know, into a drainage system. This one, for whatever reason, slopes down to the way, there's some grates down, and then it slopes up to the front. There's a, there's a dip. The problem is, okay, if it was landscaped really well, I think you could just kind of taper it into those grates and make it cover the period. We do nothing, I guarantee you, we're gonna have some big problems if and when we get snow melt off and re freezes. And so we have 22,500, we've withheld at this point. We did get a couple of landscape bids, one was, I forget, 75, and the other came in, I think I had 72 or something. We have a 12 home 22, it's less than 2% of the entire project. I don't know where this is gonna land, but I know the first step in our contract was, since that dispute, when you're speeding and affecting stuff, I don't think it is though. And all of the grass is supposed to be established, clearly it's gonna, if you flew a drone over that, it's a bad haircut. You know, where there's, where they just skimmed off, there's a lot of places with nothing going. And some portion of that, we have to take credit for it because we have the water property on the north side. I know that some of the water wasn't hitting exactly. This south side, there's some areas that haven't started grass, hell. It's been getting, and some of this, but anyway, more on that down the trail, but I don't know how it's, I don't know how it's gonna end. Just, I don't, unless you guys tell me that you're happy with it, I'll let it keep disputing it, saying it's not gonna. And I would like to take that 22,000, fix it with landscape on this, and then also that little dip that's in the track on the west turf. That's also a portion of that. Talking to Houston, you know, he claims that, I mean, clearly, it was not on the original hunch list, we didn't see it. And only you should have been walking that track earlier, you would have found that. But hunch list came out, and they had gone around, and they put water a lot of different places. To see wherever it's probably been, they got it fixed prior to this, they didn't notice that. But it, clearly we have mail, and it is under warranty for five years, and so maybe a warranty item. Houston thinks we can still hold triple G accountable to get it done, and now, that's what I prefer to do. And withhold that money, as long as we're holding it, we have some, some kind of leverage. That's the lawyer, so we can't do it, right? I think if people came out and looked at that, I can't imagine that, they're gonna make us pay that final 22,000. We could get it all, our old landscaper and fix that, we need, we do need a track doctor to fix the track, we don't have the expertise for that. Chasing that around a little. Last week I was in superintendent trainings in Boise, and admin trainings, and all the principals came over last Tuesday, Thursday. And it's a good kickoff, it's a lot of them working on other schools. We had a kickoff meeting this morning, and all of our staff were back. Bus drivers, cooks, students, all parents, teachers, administrators, all crewed. And I think, I think it went really well, kinda, and Riley did a fantastic job, she's getting food organized. We went 10:30 to 12, went through some activities, talked to Bill about where we're at, with our current ISAT scores. And then had lunch together, so it just was a nice, it was a good time, I think it was a real positive experience. Everybody's back in action, we're gonna be very good. The, the tree, the user has lots of tree problems, our tree's gone, most of his dead. Yeah, and how, the Bush brothers did it, they're gonna come back in this few weeks and grind the stump. It's maybe as high right now as it's, cut it up pretty well. But it's out of there, and you know, nobody likes that tree, I, I certainly don't. But it was gonna be a danger, and it's, it's, we can't have a dangerous situation on our property, hurt some child, so that tree is gone. You're aware that our sunny side roof that we own, we own sunny side school. Tammy Van Ness runs a daycare slash preschool out there, and has for a lot of years. Anyway, the roof got severe damage from windstorm public storm. And it never stopped having kids in it, still have kids in it. So it's not, you know, there's, there's an attic, but if you open up the crawl space, you can see a lot of daylight. So we got a big storm, we knew real bad, fortunately it hasn't rained in the last two weeks. So we kind of, DNA roofing, and they're the ones that just finished the auxiliary gym. They're, they're done, everybody else is still, you know, probably their, their still work ethic. So they went over and with our insurance adjuster, got up on the roof, you get something, you get to see that in your own footage, I say. I wasn't sure if you could see it, so anyway, so they got up and bid it, and so. They bid it at $66,000, insurance adjuster went out and said they would give us $70,000 for the project, minus $10,000 for the backup. So at this point, it's 60, and change, 60,474. So the difference is $5,000, by the way, 26, the district would be out for that, but it's made for most of the insurance. And then Tammy Van Ness, she runs a for-profit, talked to her, she agreed to split that process. And she's gonna bring us a check for half of the 55, 26, so 27, 63, kind of cover that. So we're kind of working together with her, she's checking. He's gonna do that, right, he thinks he can do the entire thing. And I talked to Tammy about, you know, kids are in there, and they're sleeping, so. Most of the kids won't be there on Friday, a few that are, she's gonna take them downstairs, but not going out outside. That's just the way. So, because he said it's gonna get dusty, and there are gonna be nails falling off on the sides. They go around with a magnet later and pick everything up, but it's, they think they can get that in there one day. That's, if you guys get a chance to go out there Friday morning and watch it progress, Friday night, it's supposed to be, you know. So we'll see, but that's, that would be pretty fun if that happens, I couldn't. Okay, that's probably enough. EB's landscape, 15,200, they bid on that landscape. See where we go on that, and I hear back from Houston tomorrow, and see where we go. Any questions?
Let's move on to the consent agenda. I don't see the WBA here, or some comments, so. Did everybody look at the minutes from our prior meetings? Maybe, any questions or changes? Any reason that we need to change our current agenda?
I think it was the way that I had put on our agenda with a provisional, or emergency provisional. But I took that out, so if you have the old one, you shouldn't have the old one. I took it out on the one that you get on, got online just now, so that's the only thing that I would tell you. I'm not changing that, I'm not gonna go that route.
I, I sure hope this early in the game this year that we don't have any notices that we can talk about.
No.
Couple days before school starts.
I could, I could relish you with some toys, some stories, but I'm not going to.
I can think of a couple since I'm dead.
I'm not going to tell you.
I'm glad we're not, I'm glad that's not to happen. What about hiring of staff, any, any that we've done recently?
Three.
Gretchen Davis, and Anna Morris.
Anna Morris, and then Jessica McMichael, McMichael, right?
She was on that list, no?
No, no, she's still there.
She's, yep.
And they all pre-signed their contracts, so, they are hired, we walked them in.
My natural report.
You know, Barb is going to phone in from Alaska, but then, guess what? Her, I, I'll tell you what, I can show you some pictures of fishing that she's doing.
I don't even want to say that yet.
Her life is fishing, so, anyway, she got a chance to do a longer outing today. So she said, can you do my notes for me tonight? And Dan is gonna do the audit, and so that'll come in here just a bit. But she did say the fund balance did come in more, more than expected. And as you review summary report, you can identify each section where expenditures were less than anticipated. That helped create that increase in the fund balance. In the educational lines, salary and benefits were less than budgeted. And that happened because of some staff losses and changes, as well as significant time off without pay. We had several, had some time off without pay. Special education was less because we received more in Medicaid funding than we anticipated. And I'm telling you, that is a, I mean, you can bill, and they can decide, yes. You think you're gonna get this much money, but you're never quite sure, because there is some, always some changing and some shifting. So that's always kind of a roll the dice and hope you get it. So we rolled the dice, and we got more than we did, than we, than we anticipated. And we met our maintenance of effort, which I don't, I could go in on the MOE, you could explain MOE if you wanted. But it's, it's a little complicated, and we just have to make sure that we're spending as much out of the general fund for special ed students and support than we're spending out of our federal program. So that's another thing, that when you need that, that's, that's, that's where you target, that's absolutely what you do. That's one of the things that Dan will ask you before you can start the audit. Make sure you've got your MOE net, because you don't want to have to pay in. We try to keep expenditures at 8% each month, because if you take 1/12, it's gonna be 8.33. So we look at the expenditures each month and try to keep that 8%. But major line items come in between 96 to 97% of that 8%, so that's pretty good. That leaves a buffer for unexpected expenses. In FY '26, the main thing to remember, we've now made our payments for our, well, we will have August payroll here really quick. That July and that August payroll are actually line items that were budgeted for last year. So people got moved to the career ladder, so it looks like we're paying less than we're supposed to. But once we move those salaries for last year FY '25 out, the accruals out, we will, we will be right where we need to be. That in September, we'll be looking right there at the 8% for those salaries and benefits. And then she said, other areas to note are the alternative school line item that came in at 60%. And, and so we budgeted a little bit more. And that's just, we, we planned that we're gonna have more kids, maybe more staff, and that's where we landed, so that's always good. Summer school occurs in July, that's when I pay it, I pay July and August, so it always comes in this month. Board expenses were at 50%, and that's the annual payment to the, to Symbly. Symbly's a little expensive, but we love it, so we're keeping it up. Building maintenance includes the annual property and insurance premium payments, which was $16,000 more than what we anticipated. We did give a little, when we were doing our budget, we budgeted a little bit higher, but we didn't budget 16,000, that's for sure. It was more like we budgeted the back end, not we were gonna go up. Safe schools at, is, came in at 79%, but that includes those annual payments for Gaggle, which is a tool that our administrators and counselors use. And PAPARA, which is student software protection licenses. These programs allow.
Can you place a Google Guardian?
Yeah.
To filter, just see what kids are, and get on student stuff, or something like that.
And they, they've, we've been able to actually find some things, and then offered some supports based on what students are looking at. And it's, it's been good, it's been good. These were previously, these two items were previously paid out of our technology funds, which is the 245 fund. However, we're not gonna get as much money in 245, so we had to pay them out of the general fund. That's, that's one of those expenses. And then checking account information was not available. However, Riley and I will proudly say that our checking account balances were up to date and were balanced. And then she said, lastly, I'm sure some of you have seen that the federal, the freeze on the federal programs at which everybody was kind of a little bit apoplectic about, did not come through. So we will be getting our federal funds and funded, but they did say that there will be cutbacks next year, so. And lastly, I'm, she didn't put this in her report, but I will tell you, Donna White, who's the county clerk. The L2, so when we, so the school district every year has to submit L2 information, which tells the, tells the county what we are levying. So we have to go through and say, here's what our levy amounts are. Well, House Bill 292 is where the state is giving us some money back, which will buy down our supplemental levy, well, bond supplemental levy, plant facility levies. We don't even know what that amount is going to be till about August 30th. And because of that timing, we weren't gonna be able to get our L2 submitted to the county because we have to do some calculations based on that number coming into us. So Donna graciously wrote and said, yes, I will give you an extension on getting your L2 to us. So that, that's gonna be nice, so that gives us a little breathing room. Because I was gonna, I was gonna, we were gonna be scrambling, so. Other than that, yeah, if you have any questions, I will try to answer. I can only tell you that I am really missing Barb. Because, because where I used to do all of this stuff, and now that we've split it, these last, this last week and this week that. My door needs a revolving door on it, I don't think I've had, I haven't had a minute where people aren't sitting at my desk or calling or talking. And, and I'm having budget questions and HR questions and everything, so it's, I love having you here, I really miss it. There. And then a couple of payment bills, I think that Riley said, based on this week, we have been going crazy, and today was even worse. So she did not get all the bills into you, we will be paying some more bills probably this week. And we may call you, or if you're okay with it, I can sign, and we're, we're gonna be moving on. But she gave you that, the bulk of them, but there are some extravagance out there. That's my report.
Sticking with it?
With that?
Are you sticking with it?
I'm sticking with it, I'm sticking with it.
Any questions? In order to move on, I'm. Okay, of course, maintain the second, all those are favorable. Now, we're gonna move right into the action items, maybe we should move A down to H.
I don't have the digital.
We're not gonna do that to you. Appreciate you being here.
You are A, you wanna stay there.
Appreciate you being here, we're all ears, listen to what you have for us.
Okay.
She, she gave all of the audit, S and E documents, so you might want to open that up because Dan is.
Mine's not open.
It says something went wrong.
I have.
Oh, you are kidding me.
It has to do with my acrobat, having to renew its license.
Okay, 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 okay.
The first one opened, this one opened.
Can we put it up there?
I could, I could, I could, I moved the. I, I gotta.
I know, I can't, can't do anything, that's the will of death now.
Yours, Dan?
That was a poor time, huh? Oh my gosh, mindset, yeah, let's see if I can get it.
The first one, the first attachment, which is that it's summer statements.
Okay, there's a reason, but I love this.
Everyone I try to, wants me to operate through.
That shouldn't work. That's what, that's what John's getting, yay. Yay. There he is.
Nice.
All right.
So we won't have to flip through the pages too much, but everybody probably would want to look at the numbers on page 10, Kyla, when we get there. But another successful year for the audit, as Mr. Kirby said. It's nice and weaser that we have attracted some really talented people with the finances. Kyla for many years, and she's still helping out on the human resources side. And then Barbara Cho doing the finances now, the budget side, and she's really, really good at what she does. Very typical that there are no audit adjustments, and so her numbers that she has year round are always correct. And we verify those balances at the end of the year, and there's hardly ever any adjustments to those. So she's really talented with school finance, which is really good. A lot goes into the audit. We review a lot of information, but I'll just hit the highlights with you guys tonight. And then if you have questions, of course, you can ask those. And one thing that I am really comfortable with is that you guys are always up to date on the finances anyways because Barbara knows what she's doing. So that's, that's good. Pages one through four, we issue an audit report. And so if an outside party said, hey, how'd the audit go for you guys? That's the report that they would want to see. And they'd say, well, what was the auditor's opinion on the report? And so we've issued an unmodified opinion. The best opinion that we can give means the financial information is accurate. Pages 41 and 42, also, we took a look at your internal controls. And these are just reports, like a lot of boilerplate language, which you're really boring to go through, but we look at internal controls. We have certain ones that we like to see. Accounting theory likes to see a separation of duties in the accounting department. We have enough staff that we have that separation, and so internal controls are in good shape. All the ones that we would like to see you guys do implement, and so that's good. And then on pages 43 through 45, we did the financial audit for you guys. And then if the school spends over $750,000 in federal money, it requires a second audit. And what the focus is on that second audit is to look at your federal major programs. And you guys spent about 1.3 million in federal money, and so you required that extra audit that we did. Everything checked out fine there on that report as well. No findings. One thing we do like to do is look at your finances on page 10. We went through each of your funds on page 10. We can look at your major funds. And so, yeah, that bottom section is perfect. If we'll just review those with you real quick. Like I say, Barbara probably has already communicated this to you, but that first column is the general fund. And so we see a small loss there, $7,000 loss in the general fund. Very bottom number, ending fund balance, $2,948,928. So if we look and see how much you guys spend on average per month, that comes out to be about a two and a half month operating reserve, meaning that ending fund balance would carry you for two and a half months before that general fund ran out of money. Seems like a lot of money when you look at it, but really you guys spend, what, 1.3 million a month or something, and so it doesn't last that long. We recommend having a month and a half in the general, to three months in the general fund. You guys are right at two and a half months, and so it's in good shape. Second column over is the child nutrition fund. You'll see a big loss there. Third number from the bottom, $274,000 loss at Zepretzky's. So the one thing that I'm noticing as I go around to do my audits, the child nutrition fund this year is not doing very well for any of the schools that we look at. I've done about 10 audits so far, and I think it's safe to say probably that every school has shown a loss in the child nutrition fund. Some smaller, $40,000, and then you guys is up there at the $274,000 loss. Lots of things that you're dealing with in that fund. Inflation, rising food costs is a big problem. And then funding in the child nutrition fund has been cut over the last few years. COVID money, they had some extra money that they sent out to school districts to cover some of those expenses, and that's now gone. So decrease in revenue and an increase in your costs is why you're seeing that big loss there. Barbara actually emailed the state, and she said, hey, we're having troubles with the child nutrition fund. Do you guys have any help that you can send our way? And from what I know, the state said, no, we don't have anything available at this time. So might be a common thing to see that child nutrition fund in that lost position. Lots of schools will transfer from the general fund to zero it out. You guys are carrying a payable on the books right now. Barbara would like to see the child nutrition fund pay the general fund back for that loss. So we'll watch it in the next couple of years. Third column in is the plant facility, very bottom number. You guys are ending with $1,026,000 in your plant, which is good. And then the fourth column over is the new modernization fund. That is the one where the State Department of Ed ran a bond, and then they kicked out that money while you had the choice to take it all upfront over yearly for over 10 years. I'm not aware of any schools that took it yearly. I think everybody took it as a lump sum. And so you guys have that ending fund balance, $6.3 million there. It's going to last you for 10 years, so. We do also look at your non-major funds. We have lots of those. Many of those are federal funds that zero out, and so not a whole lot of discussion on those, but we do review them, and those look okay. If you want to flip through them, Kyla, I don't know if we're interested or not. You start on page 34 is a good place. And so you have six pages of those non-major funds. And I don't think we need to run through them at this point. If you guys have any questions on those, I'd be happy to answer those questions. We do cover those very hard.
Those are ones you track outside of the general fund. Some people have them in their general fund, like their summer school program. We track it as a separate fund. Some of these are federal funds and we have to track them separately outside, so.
Yeah, yeah. Lots of funds that Barbara has to manage, and Kyla and some busy schools, so. As far as changes coming up, there are small accounting changes. I don't think I'll bore the board with the details on those. Barbara's aware of them. IFARMS, which is the accounting system at the State Department of Ed, requires schools follow for their accounting. They have a few changes, a few funds that are going away, and then also a few expense codes that are going away. So they're kind of simplifying your life a little bit, which is nice to see. And then one other thing we'll notice this next year, the single audit, the threshold, which is, that's a good page to end on, that's the 1.3 that you guys spent in federal money. That second audit that I talked about is triggered when you spend $750,000 of federal money. Next year, that threshold goes up to $1 million. So they're increasing that threshold, which is nice for a lot of schools not to have to deal with it. You guys always spend enough federal money that I think you're always going to have to deal with that second single audit, so. That's all I have for you, so. If you have any questions.
Always do a good job. That's fine.
Yeah. It helps to have good explanations when you set it early, and it helps to have-
And I was going to say-
Our help that we have, but they're helping with some of the stuff all the time.
Sometimes it's not as, it's not as easy, is it? Barb goes out and helps other, other schools do their audits.
Yeah, we have a really good working business relationship with both Kyla and Barbara. They have your guys' books, and they do a really good job. And then lots of times, we have other schools that are struggling, and it's, we just call these gals, and they're willing to go out and help other schools, which is really nice. Some years, both of them work on up to five or six different school districts that they try to help bring up, so very, very nice. Well, but that reverse work can just never go away.
Yeah, wow, wow, wow. Wow, wow. Okay, okay.
John, I appreciate that.
You want your laptop back? Thank you. I will give you a printed copy so that you can have one.
Appreciate it.
Is that all right?
Have a good night.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. I have the same question. I have the same problem. So I apologize. I have the same thing. So what it is, is that we don't have, I don't know if it's up to date, I'm just saying.
Time wanted to update, and I finally got to say it was a Word document, so I couldn't say it as.
I'm struggling with, so can you open the one, he left?
The first one, the first one to open, the financial-
But the other one, the one that, the revenues and expenditure summary. Okay, if you can open that one. I'll just explain that just a little bit. This is required by a state statute that after you approve the audit, then we have to post this to the newspaper to let our constituents know about what was budgeted and what was actual. This is a combination of all the funds. So this is what was budgeted for all of the funds, so federal as well as our general funds. So that's what it looks like. It looks like we have 20, 11 million, 252,097. That is not all of the general fund books that is across the board. So we have, we have a lot of funds that go into that and why it's looking like that. So it looks like a huge number. It is a huge number, but it's in different funds as opposed to just the general fund. And I hope you'll keep that going in the paper. That's what she's putting in, to certify. Do we specify that in the paper? Did we say something about that? No, she did not. She did not. She just put the budgeted and the actual, and that it, I mean, I guess she could put in there that it says all funds up at the top, revenue expenditure summary statement, all funds. So I don't know that we want that to say something different. I think that's our legal requirement is to do that. I am not terribly knowledgeable that it was that the one part says 23 and 24 down here, and Sarah asks me, I want to have a good, because I have a doubt it's the 24 to 25. Oh, she should say 25, 26, 24, 25. No, 24, 25. No, that's right. Should it be? Yeah. Okay. But the ending fund balance should be June of 25.
Yeah.
Yeah. It said June 30th of 25. That should, that's our ending for 25. Sorry, she has got it, she's got to change that. And the adjusted beginning fund balance should be July 1st of 24.
So with the bottom one here?
Those are, those are off. Those should all be within the 24, 25 year. There you go. And that makes sense. I bet some- And you know what happens is I think what we do is we get a template, and we just put our new numbers in, and we didn't read the writing over here. So I apologize for that. I know that's what, I know that's what happened, and it actually sounds like something I would do. So there you go. That's for-
Thanks for throwing me out there. I appreciate it. Okay. Other questions about that sheet with changes? Okay, so I need, I would entertain a motion to accept that, those changes to go on. Is that, that's what you're agreeing?
Do we have to accept the audit?
Those, they accept the audit. Those numbers are correct, just the names are incorrect.
I would make that motion that we accept the audit review as presented by Dan Paul in the summer prepared paper. I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been made. Second column in favor?
I don't know.
All right. Now, we get to hear from another one of our staff members here concerning the athletic passes.
Why are you using that?
Is that, is that, is that all right?
You have a white one, and you might be-
You have to wash it. You have to wash the white ones out, or you get some type of poison or something.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
So we put together what we did initially on the adult pass and the senior pass. We just did the gate fees at $8 times 25 home events and $6 at 25 home events, and that's how we got our initial number. And I left, went on vacation. I came back and I saw an email from Barbara, and I read it, and I'm like, oh, I can see what the board is saying. So that was pretty, that's a huge increase. So I sat down with Kyla last week, two weeks ago, and we kind of worked out some numbers. And I, I think it'd be more appropriate if we did the senior pass at $75 and the adult pass at 150. That's what we came up with. I know that we talked about maybe the pass, we should have been increasing this as we went, but that's just not the case, and I'm okay with that. And I'm willing to entertain it if you guys have a different option. I mean, you guys could sit down, and we can deal with that, but that's what Kyla and I came up with.
I'm sure this has been in the discussion. What was the price?
I believe, I think there was an email that went out that told the price, but off the top of my head, I think the- Go ahead.
What, last year's was?
Yeah.
110 for the adults and seniors was 54.
So it is a bigger increase than the 5% for sure. This is, this is just a community thing, but we, so if you take the six divided by 75 to figure out how you that, after you attend that many events, then you've made your money back?
Yes.
So you would, you would have, what, 12, 13, after you went to your 13th event? And a lot of seniors do go to all the basketball games, and so I think it is for, but we were talking about all the home events that we had, and I said to Bo, I said, you have to understand, though, that you have a soccer game, a volleyball game, and a football game all on the same night. So they're not going to be able to attend unless they're a really active senior, be able to get to all those events. So I said, you know, let's kind of figure out just a percentage of, and 15 sounded like a good thing because you said you have 25 home events.
Over 70.
70 home events. So we're saying after you go to your 13th event, you would have made your, had to earn that back. So by the grandparent that, or the, I don't know, the neighbor lady that you help out or something that, that likes to go to the sporting events, that's why we came up with that and that. He did say that we are less than every SRV school in the area.
Yeah.
By, by a lot on this. So we are trying to help out our community. And I'll tell you what, Bo said it, and I agree with it totally. Our support from our senior citizens is amazing, and we want to keep that them happy. And we want to keep them coming to our events. Yeah, so.
They, well, since I've been a kid, I know that we had to go out for a bond when I was in high school, and, you know, they, they support us, and they always have. So I don't want to do this to, you know, break their pocketbook. But on my side, too, there's some things I need to cover, and I don't want to be, you know, lacking that. I'll be honest with you, we sold 13 last year, senior passes, and we sold 16 for adult. So that's not the case. I'll also be honest with you, we have a lot of seniors that drop off by themselves 20 bucks and walks off, and walk off. That happens a lot. So, you know, I'm willing to help out. Yeah, if that's something, you know-
Or they come for the burgers.
Yeah, or they come for the hamburgers, right?
They're so good.
Yeah, but, you know, I don't want them to feel like we're trying to raise costs on them, especially, you know, raised here, because I remember watching me, and I remember, I, you know, oh, my gosh, I can tell you, the, I guess, the retirement people that came back and showed me, they had videotape of me when I, after I graduated. Some guy presented me with all the highlights, a video of me, and I'm like, what the hell? You know, so that, there's, it's cool. It's unique here, and I don't want to ruin that for them, you know, and so, but that's kind of where we're at right now. I'm willing to entertain if we go in the future, too. I think there's some things that we can do, that we can look into it, you know, maybe- You know, maybe a sliding ski, uh, I mean, a sliding fee for them or something, you know, where they could present something. Because I don't want, this is entertainment for a lot of them, right? And so I don't, I don't want that. I don't want them to not show up because of that. But we've sat down, we thought seventy-five would be the best.
Hey, I, I, and we have to keep up with it, right? But I think it's, it's much better than the original or just.
Absolutely.
It makes me feel a lot better.
When I came back to read my emails, like, oh Lord, that, that's, yeah, that's bad. But we just, what we did is we figured out the gates and we figured out we were seventy. We're like, twenty-five is probably good. And we sat down and looked at it, so, but that's why we have this, right? We have this checks and balance that works really well, so.
Appreciate, appreciate, I appreciate you looking at that, going back and.
Yeah, absolutely.
That sounds like a lot better. I'll ask you questions. I'm going to put in the motion. I'm going to put in the motion that we approve the annual pass rate as a percentage.
I'll go ahead and second that. Really good at that.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
I would.
All right.
Yep.
Thanks for that. Well, thanks for that.
School safety zones. Mr. Kirby, will you give us a little more information about that?
Well, okay, so from what I understand, these are just, you have to be true to them every year. And there are changes, as far as I can tell, so, um, I can read them off if you'd like. There's some on all students west of, uh, ninth or pioneer room.
There was, there was no changes.
They're all, they're all the same things.
Okay.
It's something we have to submit to the state department and it just approves so that kids that are having to cross, um, all we consider maybe a busy highway or, or busy street, that we are cleaning down school safety zones so we can pick them up because they're supposed to be under so many, they're supposed to be over so many miles or something away from the school. So by doing this, we get to do that.
So, uh, the board approved it all seven.
I'll make a motion that we approve the school safety buses on this.
Okay, motion's been made in second to accept the bus safety zones. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. Submit a piece. All right, so we're ready. Okay, moving on to the resolution of supplemental levy. We talked a little bit about this in our working meeting just to start to understand some of the numbers of it. Does anybody have any questions?
As far as the work of this.
And I think we've talked about that on that Thursday work session, that the reason for this, this resolution that we passed for the supplemental, we pass this this November and will help us for budgeting for FY twenty-seven. This is not going to be levy in, in the spring though. It's not June, it's not going to be December, June. It'll be the next December, June, and then the next December, June. So by passing it now and by getting, we have to pass it so that we can get the resolution to the county for August twenty-ninth in order to get it on the ballot. And, um, by doing it now and passing, um, that, and actually by, by getting our resolution to the county, we can do some community outreach to explain what the needs are and why we are doing this and what we would be using that money for. And so I think there's a lot of, there's opportunities for us to go out to the, to our constituents about that. So.
Is now a time to give a little blurt about it?
Well, sure.
A little?
Yeah. You are very welcome to. I, um, do you want me to?
Or just, okay. All of us, I don't, it doesn't, but I mean, it is stated there, but maybe we could give a little more explanation.
Um, the, I was at, the supplemental levy, the, the numbers that we, we, in years past, and thankfully our, our constituents, our Meerser School District folks, support all day kindergarten. We, um, we funded for half-day kindergarten. So this, this supports our all-day kindergarten. And we currently have four kindergarten teachers, so this pays for two of them because the other two are paying for the state colleges. It also, we're unique in this and, and, and Bo even alluded to that. We have a great deal of support from our, from our, um, from our Meerser School District constituents that the kids don't have to pay to play. That is huge. Um, it helps that at other schools, I, I will tell you in the valley, I, Eagle High School, if you want to take football, it's twelve hundred dollars to cost your family for your kid to take football. It's, it's expensive. And, and it goes to help defray the cost of the expense of having that sport, that's the coaching, the busing, the, all of the extra stuff, the equipment. And we don't do that in Meerser because as we say in our sign, we support our kids, our community and our country. So that's one of the things that we're doing. And technology upgrades, um, Barb alluded to in her report that we are not going to get funded as well in our technology and, and we are going to be short. And we have Chromebooks that we bought during COVID that have, have a shelf, or have a life that is ending and you don't get the upgrades. So we don't have the firewalls or the protections that you have because there's no longer going to do the upgrades for it. And of course, if we want our kids to be safe on any kind of equipment, technology-wise, we got to keep our upgrades going. So that's a hundred and sixty thousand there. And then we talked about, uh, the cost of special ed is going up and, and the support, um, that we can give our students and we need to, um, fund that. And that is going to be short this year and our school lunch. And we talked about that and he and Dan even alluded to that, the cost of, and this, and the, the, the federal has said, this is what you will provide in a school lunch program, but we're only going to pay you this much to provide that. But you have to meet this requirement. So there is this huge gap which is causing us some distress, causing our lunch programs some distress. And this would help alleviate that as well. So, um, it's not alleviating any bad debt. The bad debt is still, if you're a private paid person, you will be paying for the school lunch. This is just helping with that gap from the federal government and what they're asking us to, requiring us to, to serve to students on a yearly basis. So, yeah, that came to seven hundred and fifty thousand, but ended up quickly. And I, I appreciate that. I will tell you that the, the language that we're doing and the, and the thing that you're going out to your constituents about is that we have House Bill two ninety-two. When we talk about the L two and we go out and say we're going to run this levy, it's because we need this much money. But if the state, state, if they give us a House Bill two ninety-two, send us some money, then that alleviates that levy amount that we're having to go out because we're getting this much money from the state, which reduces how much we have to levy. However, the wording, and we did get legal counsel about this, that the, the, we levied zero dollars on our supplemental last year because our House Bill two ninety-two came in and it paid down our supplemental levy. We don't know what that's going to be, but we have to tell the constituents out there that this is what it would be if the state didn't give us any money. We know they're going to give us money, we just don't know how much. So we have to advertise as if there's zero dollars coming on the House Bill two ninety-two, which looks like eighty-six dollars and one cent or one hundred thousand. That will not, that is, that is the worst case scenario. The best case is if they pay us enough that it rises down our whole supplemental. That would be, that would be, but we can't, we're not, we're not, we're not able to advertise that. But we do need to tell our, our folks that that's what, that what would happen. Yeah, that's the worst case. So we're going out for that. I hope that's okay. I hope that was explanation enough, but we, we will have, and Mr. Kirby has said he's going to go out and do some community meetings and have some talks with people about that. And maybe we'll know some better information by then because we'll know what our, uh, what they paid us this year and we'll be able to judge by that, although there is going to be some cuts next year.
Mr. has to get educated over it. And that's me telling you, of course, this is.
Yeah, that, that's all.
It's been, it's been nice to have Karen Barbara just know this stuff. This is something new to me. It's, it's been a while, so. But, but I said, you're going to educate me if I'm going to go out and talk, which I don't have to do. I just need to know the topic, so. There's a question, understanding that, so. And I'm confident I can do that. I just, I just, I'm there.
Appreciate it. Appreciate your work going into this document. Anybody want to make a motion? Or is there any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution for the supplemental levy FY twenty-seven.
Okay, motion that made in approved and seconded to approve supplemental levy FY twenty-seven. Resolution of all those in favor?
Could I help please?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Andrea? Jim? John?
Yes.
Dylan? Thank you.
All right. SRO. Would you, Mr. Kirby, give us more, kind of, more information about?
Okay, so we went out and we worked, obviously, with the SRO and we got a little one hundred, a hundred and twenty bucks in the three years. I have the exact numbers in front of me, but I'm working with the city on that. There was kind of a standard template. You may have, you may have understanding between the city and the school district. Chief, uh, Paul, um, is, uh, working, we, we worked with Barbara as far as how we pay that out in terms of reimbursement. And they, we were supportive and they hired the person and they could provide the person's car, training, uniform. Then this is really good part of that is going to work with the district. So it spells out how he's going to be in the district. Clearly, if they have barricade, if you have them downtown, they can pull them away from us in the school for a reason. This is going to be, you're saying, for you, but the department of the city is responsible. So I'm just kind of hammering out those, those details that I know you, the city is, is, I've re-signed it tonight. I have read it, I enjoyed it, the agreement that spells out how, how it's going to work. So the company is definitely.
And we got two of them because the first one said dated August first. Uh, the city asked us to start in July first. So we backdated to July first. So they're going to pay quarterly and they'll just send their payroll records over to the state. They'll reimburse the city and life will be good. We're lucky we got this grant. We're happy. It's great.
And from what I understand, we're going to have Mr. Sampson.
I hope so. It looks like it. He's had a lot of training, so that's pretty sweet. Yeah. Cody Sampson. Yeah.
He's pretty, he's pretty connected, I think, to all the schools and, uh, strange, strange. Could be really good. You all very comfortable.
I'll make a motion that we accept the supplemental grant after standing for the SRO that the city of Meerser has written.
I'll second. I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made in second, all those in favor?
You can keep going because you're on every motion tonight.
First by Nicole. I have some, I've missed some meetings. I got some things to do.
Okay, I'm giving a rest.
Sorry.
Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right. Uh, we have some new employees at the high school, so it looks like we need to change, um, signatures, including site checks and things like that for banking purposes. Uh, does anybody have any questions about that necessity? Okay.
I would make that motion that we make changes to the signatures on the high school accounts. Now, this, we're trying to say what that is.
I'll second.
I'll, I'll.
Okay, motion's been made in second to change the signatures, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. School handbooks. Any, any changes that?
So last, last year, or, uh, I guess last spring it's approved. The middle school, now the high school part of the seniors. They're, they're in there, but there's nothing, you know, real significant. The high school did, uh, changed their cell phone, cell phone policy slightly to what most of our middle school policy. Penny here, you know, Eric wrote his little road bird at the top. And then he said, he, he came over last spring and I worked with, uh, with leadership groups, who's over several districts actually, and, uh, just talking about the behaviors and expectations. But there was nothing in there, they're not like changing something drastically. They did change a couple of recesses just to, like, ten minutes later. They did change the number of minutes of school day teaching, just adjusted slightly. They're better finished up, so I'm confident with, with the changes that they made. So if they're in here, you're welcome. Read as much as well as you like. They're not, there's nothing big changed from last year. It's going to cause you, you can fight, that's my concern. I want to change some big, big contribution issues.
Yeah.
I want to change the dress code policy, not the least distance, whatever. We have strip churches and, uh, you know, there's, there's none of this stuff.
Stop talking.
Alex just woke up. Okay, so I don't think there's anything that's going to cause you any concern trying to back up because you guys, you know, obviously backed this policy, this one, this dad, and once through the administrator, once to me, to board, and they all know you're supporting the board again. You'll look at it at some point, just to show you that there's nothing big that's going to cause you any.
Okay.
I know that we approved this law and looks for W H S park.
Motion's been made in seconded. Handbooks, all those in favor?
Aye.
You wanted to make a motion. You have a question?
I have a question.
Ask the question.
What is the, what's the mascot pioneer? The mascot pioneer? The owl, the owl?
Okay, so I was told that, you know, it's, it's a wolf breed. It's a very.
Cause they've added the, the growls thing. I think it's.
Well, I thought we did. We talked about that, you're right.
Yeah, I don't think an owl growls, but I don't know.
It's a wolf breed though. Yeah.
I think, I, I do know that Park School was the holdout and they came and decided they would be a wolf breed, so.
It's a fine result. It's always been.
And so, and I think they changed their song.
So just in future, we've already approved this, in future under discipline plan, you say we respect and we're responsible since the owl away.
Oh, okay.
There is the owl still listed in there. Just, I just wanted to double check if we're in the range of the owl's stuff or something.
Good. See, now my job is back.
It just took.
I really appreciate it. All right, you're good.
Do you see the?
I think I was just, you should have read as much as I want.
So you should have had a change there. We didn't have a change.
It's okay. Future, maybe it's still changed.
You think I'll say?
I mean, we could just put a GR, and it's still, it could go out of the way.
There you go.
The growls right above. Growing, respectful, ownership, welcoming, loyal, safe, rewards. The growl.
Good job.
Very good.
I appreciate that.
Okay. Do we need a new motion? Okay. You know, we get, we get down to one of our favorite subjects of, of our board, and that's policies. We had a working meeting Thursday and talked about all these policies. And we had some great explanation from the state on some of these policies. These are all policies from the state. They're riveting. They are... But we did go through them and didn't find any, um, anything that we talked about on Thursday that was not the, we're not for the Weezer way. Any questions on these policies before we move them to the first reading? And just to let you know, you know, we've been talking about Thursday too, but the first reading does not set these policies in stone. They're constituents and changes need to be for a second reading. So if we accept them now and, and we find some changes, we still have a little bit of time to do that before a second reading.
Well, because some of them have that September work session, we had Thursday work session, September as well.
Because several of them have like where you have to check the options or, so we just need to go through those.
Yeah. And that might be a good time to do that.
So we're saying the motion to, to move these to a first reading? To close tomorrow?
No, you can say the policy's listed.
Okay.
There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen.
So I'll make a motion that we move these policies listed to a first reading.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded for moving these policies to a first reading. Catagory, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Fantastic. That brings us to any discussion items, any, any items that, um, need to have, future agendas that need to be... One, one item that, that has come on my mind, and I still need to have a conversation with Mr. Kirby. But we're going to be in September next month, and we've got a superintendent with a one-year contract, so we're going to want to start talking about if Mr. Kirby's wanting to stay or, or has the ability. But if we need to replace a superintendent, we want to, is it, the state sooner than later? So a future agenda, I think would be that conversation with Mr. Kirby. Sorry to put you on the spot, but it's just a future, future need that we need to talk about. Can we just keep filing, levy? Yeah, we'll keep, perhaps, we'll have some more discussion about the levy just to have it out being visited with.
It's, it's, it's a concept of opportunity to, to, I don't know, I'd be good for the board if it's necessary. So it's, it's, Mr. Trey, it's to start the Weezer Alumni Foundation. As well as, as well as a Hall of Fame kind of foundation. Talked to a couple of people, and I got some, I think some pretty good opinions. It just seems like there's a lot of Weezer people from years just been, I would say, I don't know, seventy-six, 100 kids, probably an average of 100 kids. Three, four, five years I do.
300 and come five, I don't know.
Yeah, okay, so let's say, yeah, I'm against all. So my 50th reunion is, is, so, and, yeah, all those guys, I bet there's 10% of them. Just had tremendous experience, I think a lot more than that, had tremendous experiences in Weezer. And if they knew there was a cause, they would, I think they would contribute to it. And so seeing this, seeing that Weezer has lost some by now, so somebody could, or I have a popular football, or nail that. Put their like $5,000, $600,000, same goal. My gosh, we have two previous NFL players we had. You know, we got football state championships, basketball state championships, girls' boys', track, wrestlers. That potentially, if you had a foundation, the idea would be to have memberships, yearly memberships. And somebody would have to kind of set it up and get, and then people within those, you try to get like a, a representative for like each grade, like, you know, we know some people from, they had a, had a communication. And, uh, yearly memberships, and then you have board, kind of helps determine what are the main needs for these. I just think there's a lot of people who don't think, I don't know, that's the root. Multiply that towards a project, knowing that goes to a good cause.
Athletic cause or just a cause?
Anything. It could be that, but it could be anything, the things your school is going to do. What I saw is like, well, they're, they're just writing this thing. And that would be up to the board to do it. But it needs, okay, athletics should be a part of it, but it's clearly not. Like even in the Hall of Fame, I might have some famous scientists, like Locke, or, or, it's something, you know, just really well-known, so it's kind of Weezer way. Anyway, I guess that's the first discussion. Now we're going to just discuss football. It is a good concept, um, to take a board and take some buying and some enthusiasm and energy, but we stay Weezer. I know, I don't know if you guys know Jason, I think we have, he's a principal. I raised like $60,000, that's a couple of years ago, about 15 kids, but it's not, it's not. And, uh, it'd just, it'd just be a, a way to promote, you know, something to like. When I was here a few years ago, I, we did, we wanted to do like our AR store where kids could earn little prizes for being Weezer. I want to talk to Jerry, but you can't fund that with a school, you know, a taxpayer-funded enterprise. So we started Calvin Fever Night. Calvin Fever Night became really big. We made maybe $20,000 bucks on that this year. A variety of, whether you're able to fund, I was only maybe $200, $300, extremely rare to pay that. So a foundation, knowing, I'm Calvin Fever, but a foundation could fund that, to help kids, inspire them to be those types of things. I think you could, I think you could take these senior citizens hats and say, hey, guys, if you want to promote our senior citizens, do this, do that, on a 10-month, or something, or some, I don't know, whatever the cause could be. I think there could be, uh, a large number of possibilities, you know, this could, this could fund. It could fund sending kids to basketball games. A lot of kids can afford it, and you want to promote it. That could be a possibility, right? I think you have banquet yearly, if you brought in, did you manage to bring in, Hans Olsen, Czech, or, or, or Springling? 95 basketball state championships. There are Weezer state football champion teams because you're a part of it, because they've been elected to Weezer Hall of Fame. The government town, I don't know, I just think there's, I think there's potential that really could be right for Weezer to, to promote and to benefit schools, provide scholarships, maybe for the kids, or, or the kids. If you add that, I was like, you know, like John, you could, for, for a scholarship, I would. I don't, because there's not organized thing. Some people, you want high school to just do their own sponsorship, go and ask a sponsorship, and, and, and those are, those are really cool. You know, in Weezer family type things, but like you, it's just, people have good feelings about Weezer. You have, you have people all over the country not to plug Alex or anything, you know. We look at living in the news, you know, watching them try to beef up with Weezer, or, or take the signal. I don't know, you, these are such a sense of community. You, you, you leave here, you can go anywhere, and be successful, and, and, so. Anyway, I just got a concept, something to think about, maybe it happened here, but I would like to help train, celebrate, celebration. See if that's, run out of the flagpole and see if, if it's suits.
I like, I like it too.
Discussion I've done.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Any, any, anything else that you have got the board's all? Even if it wasn't a lot of description, it was, it was still a good idea. Good job. Any other future things, where there's, there's more time, there's more time, just, this is great for anybody that has something. Moving on, because we're on good pace, I can't really go out and communication.
Don't we might.
Don't wait.
Okay, so, so I have that. Mr. Brush said he would drive the van to the IFO convention, the ISBA convention in Portland. Didn't have the article. But, um, that's what we're planning on doing, and I have, did I have you down? Mel, I am going to put Mel down, that's right. And then Andrea and you, and perhaps John, we're still looking at your schedule, and John, no. And Dave Kirby's going to go, and I may go if we drive. Um, and then they haven't opened up the registration of the hotel yet, so I'm still working on that, so. And then also, um, today, we do this every year, we sign up for, I think I gave each of you the Lifeline. If you'd like to, um, sign up, um, as part of the Weezer School District, um, business, I will tell you, it certainly helps to be a member of Lifeline. It seems to fly in here every now and again. And, uh, because by being a member, you do not have to pay for anything of that transport. And that includes anyone that's on your taxes or your insurance. So if your son or daughter is in college, then they're not really in Weezer. It covers a pretty wide area, so you can certainly have that as well. I don't know, some of Mr. Brush said, some of the businesses that they're part of. Or your father-in-law, yes it is, and that's very nice of him. And I, I do that as a mother, and, um, the Cobb family has used my, um, my membership for them quite a few times, so. Um, but they, I, I think Lifeline right now, it's $30,000 cost. So it will grow your insurance, and then you're responsible for whatever's up there, which is not the whole amount. So only sign up if you would like to, please. This, yeah, I, my mom gets us, yeah, for Christmas every year, so.
That's a good thing. That's a great gift.
Don't need to, to do it, is that what we're doing?
Yeah. I was like, I feel a little wrong.
No, that's it. I just was giving you, if you, if you were interested in it, there you go.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay. We've got to the end, but we can't leave.
I move that we adjourn this meeting, Paul said.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead.